Y'all ready, gang? I'll call to order the September 2nd meeting of the Shawnee Commission. Call or roll, please.
Stevens.
Here.
AG.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Maynor.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Not seeing, is Reverend Curvo here? No, he's our eloquent prayer leader, but not seeing him here, if you're able to stand, please stand and we'll recite the Lord's Prayer. Our Father.
Your art in heaven.
I will be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Vice Mayor Harrod, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Attention, position, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'm going to recess the city commission meeting.
Do the minutes first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I better do the minutes, huh? Attaboy, James. Thank you, that's why you put me straight. I'll consider approval of the minutes for the regular meeting. Do I have a motion in that matter?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Stevens. Motion carries. Now recessed the city commission meeting and go, I'm gonna go to Shawnee Airport Authority. We do have a quorum. I'll consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Well, let's let Commissioner Stevens get it all in here today. Okay, I have a second, let's vote. Motion carries. I will recess the Shawnee Airport Authority and reconvene the Shawnee Municipal Authority. We do have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion on that consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Hall, motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner AG. A motion carries. Okay, I'll recess the Shawnee Municipal Authority and reconvene the city commission. Item number two on our agenda is consider resolution of appreciation to Commissioner Pam Stevens, Ward 1 of the City of Shawnee. Commissioner Stevens, could you come down to the front, please?
We don't let you vote on those.
Huh? We don't let you vote on that, do we? We don't let you vote on that, huh?
Well, there's the problem, I guess, somebody might not appreciate them either.
Maybe we adopt a resolution.
Oh my gracious.
I'll second it.
Well, wait a minute, we may have some big discussion. Huh?
Let's not discuss.
Okay, it says read the resolution. She's not gonna do that, I'm reading that. Okay, all in favor of this matter, let's vote.
Do we have to do one at a time?
That's why, official, I guess.
Sorry, John.
That's all right.
Discussion's coming ahead.
John, you can vote. Motion carries. Well, I still go down the front, Pam. Okay?
Why don't you do all three of the resolutions before they go down one? I'm sorry.
Well, I need the exercise, I just watched that deal in sixty minutes.
I think we have people that are eager to come up here and sit. I think we have people that are eager to come up here.
Okay, so all right, item number three is consider resolution of appreciation. A motion by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Stevens on Commissioner Winteringer. Any discussion against this or for it or anything?
We're all for it.
We're all for it, okay. Call or roll, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number four is consider resolution of appreciation to Steve Smith, Commissioner of Ward 6 of the City of Shawnee. Do you entertain a motion in that matter?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Winteringer, second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. Motion carries. I'll just go ahead and do the resolutions of appreciation on the plaques and we'll get that and down there at the same time, so any other comments we need? I don't think we need to vote on that, so.
Other than I just would like to say to the three outgoing commissioners, I've enjoyed the last four years and enjoyed working with you and we've done a lot of good things and Shawnee's progress and I do appreciate your efforts, it's a voluntary responsibility and so I hope next year we'll probably double our pay with any of this, so I do appreciate your effort and attendance and hard work, thank you.
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Harrod said, I learned a lot from all three of you and I appreciate it, you know, when I was new, you guys taught me a lot and I really did learn from you, so thanks.
Well, I'll say, I'll echo what you've just said. It's just amazing to me what the hours that you give these, this position and back to the city and you, a word of thank you is really not enough, you know, because it takes tremendous amount of hours and a sacrifice for doing this and people complain about certain things and all that, but you've done a great job and it's been an honor for me to serve as mayor with you three distinguished people, so thank you again for what you've done for this city. Okay, now Pam, can I take her then, can I go down front with her? All of them at the same time? Well, I just wanted ladies first.
Better picture of the whole group.
I'm gonna read the resolution to all three of you, okay? And resolution number 6474 says, "A resolution expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of Pam Stevens, John Winteringer, and Steve Smith. Whereas Pam Stevens, John Winteringer, and Steve Smith was elected Commissioner on Ward 1 on the 20th day of November 2006, and whereas they have demonstrated to be a person of upright character, a good citizen, a friend to many, and a worthy representative of the City of Shawnee, and whereas the said has helped make many important decisions affecting thousands of lives in this community by taking a positive approach to the many projects set forth before lending mature judgment and experience to those decisions while maintaining a level of unsurpassed integrity. And whereas you have been instrumental in the accomplishments of the city that includes economic and cultural development, public safety, ongoing street improvement programs, and beautification of the community, and whereas it is both fitting and proper for this governing body to officially recognize all three of you for your dedicated performance of the duties and responsibilities as a member of the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, that they hereby express their sincere appreciation and gratitude to you three for your distinguished service to the City of Shawnee. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official records of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and that a copy here be presented to each one of you with the desire that you shall contribute, shall continue to contribute your talents and energy to the betterment of the city, and that you shall enjoy much happiness and good health and good fortune in the years to come." And I also have plaques here for each one of you and I'll read Pam's and the same for you all, each one of you says Pam Stevens, Commissioner, Ward 1, City of Shawnee, on November 20, 2006, to September 2nd, 2014, for your outstanding service, unattiring dedication, and unyielding commitment to the citizens of Shawnee. I think they, these people deserve a round of applause. All right, at this time, we will have the swearing in of Ward 1 Commissioner Gary Vogel, Ward 5 Commissioner Lisa Shaw, and Ward 6 Commissioner Michael Daxter by Municipal Judge Robert Jones in a presentation of certificates of election. You will come forward.
If you'd raise your right hand, please, in the feet after meeting. I, your name.
I am the law.
You solemn swear.
I solemn swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not.
That I will not.
knowingly receive.
knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable thing.
Or other valuable thing.
For the performance.
For the performance.
Or non-performance.
Or non-performance.
Of any act.
Of any act.
Or due.
Or due.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than.
Other than.
A compensation.
A compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As Commissioners of the City of Shawnee.
As Commissioners of the City of Shawnee.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and I will recess our meeting and we will now go out and enjoy these commissioners and the ones that are leaving and have some refreshments out in Commissioners, are you ready to go back to work? Here we go. Are you ready, sir? Go to work. I will reconvene the city commission and before I move on to item seven, I just want to say, well, looking forward to working with you and glad you're here and thank you again for agreeing to serve in this position and make our city a better place for all. So, item number seven is a commission appointment of a vice mayor, do I have any nominations for the vice mayor?
I'd like to nominate James Harrod.
Okay, I have a second, we have a motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by our new commissioner down there, Mr. Vogel, right off the bat, going to work and so we Motion carries, okay? Item number eight is consider approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve this agenda, a second by Commissioner AG, a second by Vice Mayor Harrod, let's vote. Michael, would you vote for study and Gary, you have to push one of those buttons up there, Gary? Motion carries. Item number nine is consider approval of the consent agenda. Chair, do we have a motion on that matter?
So moved.
Mr. Hall, second by Vice Mayor Harrod, let's vote. Motion carries. Item authorized staff, let's see, we move to item number 10, Commissioners' comments.
I didn't have an opportunity last week after our city engineer made the presentation about the flooding down in the south part of town, but Mike, you can tell him it took a lot of great work to do that and we appreciate his time and effort and explanation and all the work he did on that. Thank you very much.
Any other Commissioner comments? No, we'll move on to item number 11. At this time, we have citizens' participation, we encourage citizen participation, you have a three-minute limit, 12 minutes on what subject, if anybody'd like to come forward and speak, inform us of anything, please feel free to do so. Okay, sir? I need you to state your name in the microphone and sign that deal so that TV audience, huh?
This is an agenda item.
Oh, this is an agenda item? Okay.
Member.
Yes, sir, my name is Randy Hopkins. I'm here on behalf of my sister, which is 61, she's disabled. My mother's 84 and she is disabled. It come out on the news star Sunday where, here it is, my sister's house has been condemned to be knocked down. We haven't even, we haven't even had a hearing over it. Now, they've already knocked one down, you're gonna take this 61-year-old woman here that's got a titanium plate in her back holding her up, and you're gonna knock down her primary residence and turn her into homeless. No, that ain't gonna happen on my watch. I've been to Vietnam, I've been to Iraq, I've been to Afghanistan, now I come over here and I have to put up with nepotism like this, not on my watch.
Now, wait a minute, ma'am, I need you to state your name.
My name's Kevin Luke Johnson.
Okay.
This is my home at 618 East Oakland that made my papers Saturday paper and everything and so I'm appealing for late for the court.
Tangler's Court.
With, for return, the, the raised and removed ads because I'm here and spent over to county and court and then a code for nothing and I spent about 50 minutes and I sat there and stayed ruled on it, so I'm peeling it because my home, I mean my home, now it needs some repairs on back here because I had pictures seven times in my home, 21 years, seven times, but when city damage is full, all my neighbors sewer backs up in my backyard. Last year, like February last year, backed up in my backyard seven times, went underneath my house, and the first time it did that, my brother and I scooped 27 syringes out of that sewer, one more, and everything and I got pictures of it and everything and it, we had to put eight foot down, PVC pipe in my feed out to keep it from falling out there and we stopped up my stove and everything.
What you got them out there, playing out there?
That's four years ago, five years ago. My brother and I locked our house to move in with our parents to help take care of them.
Tell us you got some time.
Our dad passed away last, he was eight.
Is it all?
My dad's eight three, but he made, so last year when this sewer went out the house and everything and it backed up into my bathroom, see, I always keep the floor lamp in doorway of my bathroom.
Pam?
It's a mess. And.
Mr. Chairman, you might oughta go to item 13 and ask for staff report on this and we might could.
Well, we will, we'll just listen to them and then we'll go to 13 and let them come up, okay? Okay, we're fine. Okay, ma'am, I hate to cut you off, but your time is, I'm sorry about this. Let me just, anybody have questions to her? Do you live in that house?
No.
You don't live there?
No.
Okay.
I locked it up.
Okay, okay.
About four years ago and we moved in to our parents' house.
Okay.
Take care of them. I wanna go back home on these days, but when the sewer hit the walls of my laundry room, it sucked up into that sheath rock and they said, "We have your laundry room."
Thank you, ma'am, our time is up on this matter, okay, but we appreciate you speaking to us and letting us know, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Okay, we'll move to item number 12, is presentation of appreciation to Lowe's Hero Program, Walmart, and K&amp;J Construction for donations of labor materials for the police department, gym, and canine training. Chief France, will you handle that presentation for us, please, sir?
When they had my officers come on up and I had the OJ. Mayor Commissioners, I just want to take just a few minutes of your evening to tell you about what I think is a fabulous program. The police department receives an awful lot of support from the community, but this year we were truly blessed, we were contacted early in the year, every year Lowe's conducts what they call a heroes program, it's a grant-type program, a service to the community. We were very fortunate that they came to, last year they did the Jefferson School Project, this year we're very grateful they selected the police department. We had a couple of projects that we were looking at, didn't quite have the funding, we were actually trying to self-help one of the projects and it was just barely inching OJ Price, the manager of Lowe's, contacted the city, asked if they could help out, and we are so grateful for that. They really went above and beyond to help the department, they did, they actually did two projects. We have a facility at Park and Federal that they completely remodeled, I don't see it up on the screen, we do have some photos of it, hopefully it'll be up on the screen in a second, about the work they did, but they got into it and the more they got into it, the more they wanted to do and work and the employees were just, were just something special and they kept wanting to fix it up, make it really, really nice for the department, for the employees, and then they also wanted to do an outside project, so they tried to we helped the canine program out and they built an obstacle course for the canines out at the range, completely fenced it off, built these obstacles. It was just a great partnership and show of support. And then K&amp;J Construction, the owner, his wife worked for Lowe's, heard about it and he came in and sprayed on a Sunday morning about insulation on the project and then Walmart jumped in and made a donation to the gym project also, so we're very grateful. You see the officers here, we have Lieutenant Rick Greenland, head of the canine program, they worked together to develop the course and we're very grateful of that. The other officers here helping with the gym project and we truly now have this facility at Park and Federal we can truly be proud of and the canine course is second to none in the state. For a city our size, that is a tremendous asset, so not only for our community, but there's other canine teams that'll come in across the state and use that facility, so we're very grateful for that, so if you'd like to present, OJ.
Sir, I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And then K&amp;J Construction not able to be here tonight, but we will definitely get their plaque to them and stuff, but once again, thank you very much for the support that you've shown the department and the city and we're very grateful.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
I'd like to extend a real thank you to each of the individuals that just contributed. I think this is truly a community effort, when you see Walmart and Lowe's and K&amp;J Construction contribute to the community, it shows them as individuals that support our City of Shawnee, K-9, and Police Department, and I really appreciate what you've done, thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 13, discussion consideration and possible action on Pamela Johnson's appeal of an administrative order requiring the demolition of the residential structure located at 618 East Oakland. Mr. Erickson, do you have a report, sir? Sir, I'm sorry.
I'd be at.
Huh?
I'd be at 618 East Oakland.
That's her house, right?
Yes.
Right, but, okay, you need to sit back down, okay? Thank you, we're gonna get some information on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission members. 618 East Oakland was condemned by the City of Shawnee on August 14, 2014, after the issuance of an administrative order testing to suck. and fourteen, after the issuance of an administrative order attesting to such. Ms. Johnson did appeal that order also on August fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. 618 East Oakland consists of a single-family residential structure that is vacant and has not had city water service since two thousand and nine. In your packet this evening, which starts on page forty on your electronic packet, is a brief memorandum that talks about the property in a little bit of additional detail, provides some background information. Some of the background information that's contained therein includes information about previous violations that date back to two thousand and four on the property related to abandoned vehicles, junk trash and debris, tall grass and weeds, and the repeat violations for some of those, and additionally. Ms. Johnson previously filed for a building permit in March of two thousand and fourteen. However, that permit was never picked up, and no work has been done to date. And included in, attached with this memorandum are a series of photographs, so you can see the condition of the property, and those photographs, in my opinion, indicate that the structure is in a severe state of disrepair, and does meet the statutory definition of dilapidated. According to the Potawatomi County Assessor, the structure is approximately six hundred and eighty-four square feet, and was built in nineteen forty. I have reviewed Ms. Johnson's appeal, and certainly am sympathetic to the fact that she was not able to be present for the hearing. I believe that she did, in good faith, attempt to be present, because she did arrive eventually at the office sometime after the hearing. I believe she had, first came here to the City Hall, to the main City Hall building, and to the main courtroom, and then also went to the county courthouse. And so I'm certainly sympathetic of that, and I don't have an objection to the commission dismissing the current order, provided that Ms. Johnson make a good faith effort to improve the property, as she intended to previously this year when she took out a building permit, and, which again, however, was not picked up, and no work has been done. So in terms of the process, the administrative order is appealable to the City Commission, and that is why it is before you this evening. If you concur with the administrative order, and also find that the property is dilapidated, then an appeal after that point would go to District Court. If you, if you would like to consider the appeal, again, I would just simply ask that we keep the timeframe reasonably short, so that, because this currently is a blight to the neighborhood, and is certainly impacting adjacent properties, and is hazardous to the public health, safety, and welfare.
What would you consider reasonable time period for a...
I think it shows that historically, that she certainly intended to make some improvements, and did at least make the initial step of filling out a building permit. What I would ask is that that permit be resubmitted, and that it actually be paid for and picked up. And then, once an individual is operating on a remodel permit, it's valid for six months, and if work is continuing, it can certainly be renewed for additional time periods. So an individual could have, you know, upwards of twelve months or more to conduct the necessary repair. So this is not something where, I don't think it's realistic to expect the property to be fully rehabilitated in sixty days. I'm simply requesting that at least the process be started.
So reissuance of the building permit within thirty days, or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Well, I drove by that place.
Does that sound reasonable?
I drove by that and looked at today, and I think another Commissioner did. Oh, my goodness. You're gonna spend a lot of money to get that thing up to speed. But again, if you think that's, if whatever the commission wants to do, that's your call.
It's their call.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you had your say, okay? Thank you, not trying to shut you off, it's just, okay?
Be happy to answer any other questions the commission has.
Did you have a question?
Well, I do have a question I would like to ask Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, is it your intent to go in and to truly work on this property and to make the changes?
Yes, ma'am, my name is Mr. Hopkins.
Mr. Hopkins, excuse me.
I'm an expat, I worked overseas, I provided direct frontline support for the military. I built prisons. If I can't do that little old crack and box house, you know, in ninety days, then, you know, I just need some breathing room here, you guys. I mean, y'all sent me a five hundred fifty dollar boat fine, I'm taking care of her, my mom, and my place, so I'm just spread thin.
Okay, Mr.?
I had to take leave with my people, Martin, you know.
No, ma'am. The less a Commissioner calls on.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Did you say, did you say ninety days you could have it back up to speed?
Yeah, I'd get it up to speed, man. If you just get code enforcement off. Over in the west, you got big old head and I'm trying to butt. I'm a big boy, man.
If we could submit an application for a remodel permit, and then we got it, we didn't need that, we need to repair it, man. Because we ripped up laundry, like the house made the laundry.
Okay. Okay, so I understand in ninety days, is what I'm hearing, that it could be, you've got a lot of work, because I drove by, I drove by.
Four, five months, I've set up a payment.
But no more than six months?
No more than six months, I gotta pay off code enforcement now for all the fines.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Go ahead. What's the Commissioner willing to do?
I make a motion to consider this for a six-month period.
They need to reissue the building permit within thirty days. They need to have that building permit within the next thirty days to start the work. And that gives them six months.
Michelle, you made the motion, do you agree with him? You want to add the thirty days permit in there?
Yes, add the language that Commissioner Hall stated.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Hall in this matter. Okay, would you, I don't, you don't read a title on this, do you? Because we just have a new motion on it, so then we're ready to vote on this matter. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, item number fourteen is discussion, consideration, and possible action on a resolution canceling the municipal election, putting to the voters of Shawnee Ordinance Number 2549 NS, amending the charter of the City of Shawnee, set for November the fourth, two thousand and fourteen, and notifying the Potawatomi County Election Board of the cancellation. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, any discussion in this matter?
Well, I'm the one that...
Go ahead, go ahead, Linda.
Okay, I was just gonna say I'm the one that requested that this item be put on the agenda, and I had a couple of reasons for doing that that I just wanted to make you aware of. One is that this item, or the way it's ordered, the process itself, if passed, would somewhat diminish the commission's authority in the deannexation process, and I think that the commissioners would certainly make it more difficult and take a longer period of time. And I think that the new commissioners who are going to be dealing with this for the next four years should at least have an opportunity to weigh in on that decision. And secondly, it seems like there's a misconception that there's not a process in place right now that allows the public to provide input, and that's not the case. The City Commission's decision is not final unless no one takes any action. There is a petition process in place that would allow the public, a citizen, a voting citizen of Shawnee, to file either an initiative or referendum petition to bring this to a public vote, if they're unhappy with the City Commission's decision. So it seems to me like basically what we're doing is we're taking away the right of the citizens to accept the City Commission's decision without going through a time-consuming process at a cost of thousands of dollars to the taxpayers. And I just don't think that that's good for the city. I just don't think that's the way to go about it.
Okay, any other comments?
I would like to concur with what Commissioner Gee stated. I believe this diminishes our authority as City Commissioners. I believe that respectfully, that we should be given the opportunity and ability to consider these type of issues, that to me, it should not come to the vote of the individuals, because this, our citizens are not informed on this particular action. And to become truly informed, we'd need, I think, community-wide meetings. We would need to listen and support those areas that are out there, so that they'd have a full understanding of what they would vote on, and to me, that's very costly. I think we need to look at the long-term issue on this, that if we were to put this type of action into place, then we would remove certain citizens from our population, and I believe that respectfully, that isn't our intent here.
All right, my turn?
Sure.
All right, I could probably talk an hour on this, and I'm gonna try to keep it short. I can't imagine what we're doing here, I really can't. What we're asking is to allow four people, four people to make a decision that the city has never had this type of decision before, right? This is deannexation within certain, certain conditions. We have never in the history of Shawnee had to do this, right? We've never done it. And to allow four people to do this, and take that right away from our citizens to vote on it. Right now, our citizens have the vote. If we, we can't go increase the sales tax, right? Why couldn't the City Commission do that? Because the law says that the citizens should get to vote on that, right? Well, in my opinion, we should do, just like a lot of other cities, and not only in Oklahoma, all of the United States do, when they have a deannexation of something of this magnitude that meets these conditions, they allow the citizens to make the choice. The City Commission is not smarter than all of the city, all of the citizens. We can't decide for them something like this. We need to give that power back to the citizens. Our country was founded on democratic process. Let it work. Let the citizens make the choice. Of course, we're gonna have to educate them a little bit about the differences, but we have to do that on every election. They should take the time to learn. We don't want to make that, I don't feel like I can make that decision for them, whichever way I vote, yes or no to deannex them that meets these conditions. I don't have the, you know, I don't want to make that for the citizens. This is gonna impact not only our children, but our grandchildren's children. This is a huge impact on the city, potentially. It may not ever even come to a vote, but if it does, if somebody wanted to deannex Shawnee Mall, for example, then it should go to a vote of the citizens. We shouldn't allow four commissioners, four commissioners who can be influenced, have biases, conflict of interest, be bought, or be bullied into voting yes to deannex something. That's ridiculous that we would even think about it that way, in my opinion, right? It's just, it's just, you know, un-American to say that we're gonna take that right away, right? And Linda says it costs a lot of money. It costs, I don't know what it was, it's fifteen thousand dollars or something like that for an election. That's a very, very small amount of money, you know, in the grand scheme of things, when it's something that is this important to affect us for years and years and years, right? It just, it's just, you know, it's, and, you know, Linda says, Commissioner Aggie says, well, the citizens have the right to, you know, afterwards, that they can do a referendum, they can do petition, right? The state, this day and age, you only have thirty days to do that. You can't get that done that quickly, and people don't want to sign their name. We're having problems all across the state. You can't even pass a referendum to put storm shelters in all the schools. They can't even get enough signatures for that. So what makes us think that we can actually get signatures in thirty days to overturn a mistake that the commission made? In the past, I think it's ironic, some people on the commission said, we need to put things before vote of the people, we need to put it before the vote of people, you know, like recycling, right? Yet this, which is a hundred times more important, and it's gonna impact us for years to come, they don't want to put in front of the vote of the people, for the vote of the people. It just, it doesn't make sense to me, it's not logical, and I just, I just can't even believe that we would even consider it.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your comments. Anybody else have any comments?
Of course, I have. As most of you are aware, when we ran the sales tax elections before, I was opposed to the increase in the sales tax, and, but I did vote to take it to the people, because I felt like it's their responsibility to make that decision, whether or not the commission had the right to put it before the people, people had a right then to make that decision. I feel the same way about this. I don't think you can get in thirty or sixty days, whatever it is, I don't think you can get the signatures on a petition, a referendum petition, to take it to an election. And again, I agree with Commissioner Hall, and it says that, you know, the people with the storm shelter and other things fall short, medical marijuana fell short. Just here lately, there's been three or four things that people that feel strongly about hadn't been able to circulate petition and get the proper signatures. So I'm opposed to reconsider, and I'm opposed to not having the people vote on it.
I do have a question over there. In the deannexation process, everybody that's in the city pays for the water, sewer, electric. Now, if you deannex where Keith lives, who pays for the water city, water sewer, city goods then? If he deannexes...
I might respond to that. It would be whatever, if you, if you vote for this, then those commissioners could make that vote call, I believe, so.
Let me help you with a little bit this. The user of the water in the sewer would still pay the bill. There are people outside the city limits that have city water. So if you're using city water, you'd still pay that bill. The infrastructure, on the other hand, you know, that comes from, in part, the revenues of the water sewer system, so that wouldn't change, but it also comes sometimes with bond money or grant money, and is backed up with the sales tax. So you kind of have two different issues, but anybody that uses water pays for the water, and deannexation would not change them paying for the water or the sewer that they were using.
Thank you.
But in this, it would, if they deannex, they have to reimburse the city for the infrastructure that's in that, in that area.
You know, Commissioner Hall stated that there'd been cities that had done this. Commissioner, could you tell me which cities in Oklahoma may have done this?
I can't, but when we were talking about this, there was some research done, and it was, even Linda had done some research and said it was done both ways, but it was cities.
Well, the research that I found, I don't remember if I found any that actually automatically went to an election or not. Most of them, the decision is made by the commission.
But there are cities out there that do this, that, when we were talking about this, Linda, remember I recall you specifically saying that there are cities that do this. We can certainly get that list of cities for you.
The commission makes the decision. And I'd just like to reiterate, you know, the petition process was put in place for a reason, and it's, I think, because it was put there to ensure that there is a substantial interest in opposing something before you go to the time and expense of an election. And if you automatically have an election, whether it's needed or not, then I don't think you're really doing a justice to your taxpaying citizens by spending that money. It may be difficult, but if there is enough interest in order for it to pass, then there should be enough interest to get those petitions on this, or those signatures on that petition.
Okay, we need to wind this down.
Okay, one more comment, if I may. Has there been any consideration by the planning committee? Have they taken part in this at all in regard to detachment?
I don't know that's, that's, they would be a part of this.
Or if we're looking at detaching, then that, to me, that's part, or should be part and parcel of the planning.
They don't have to go for the planning commission at all, the planning committee.
Okay, let me kind of repeat. A vote for, let me see if I understand.
So they don't have a motion or say?
Yeah, but just a minute, we still have discussions. We vote for this matter, it means that that resolution that was passed previously goes away.
A yes vote makes it, rescinds it. A no vote keeps it.
Okay, all right, now, we've had discussion. Do I have a motion?
Does everybody understand that? Gary?
Everybody understands it, okay. Is there a motion?
A yes, no, a yes vote rescinds, a no vote keeps it, the way it was done a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion in this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to cancel the municipal election.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Doxter, I'm sorry, Commissioner Aggie made the motion, okay? Do you need to read the title in this matter?
This is a resolution canceling a special election in the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, on Tuesday, the fourth day of November, two thousand and fourteen, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of Sid City, the question of approval of Ordinance Number 2549 NS, and notifying the Potawatomi County Election Board of the cancellation.
So, may I ask for clarification? Yes to rescind and no to what?
Yes to cancel the election, no, the election goes forward. That's probably the easiest way to explain.
Well, that's a good way. Okay, let's vote. Okay, let's vote. Well, we have three yeses.
Extension's a no. An extension's an extension, but it takes four affirmative votes to pass the resolution, so the resolution fails.
Okay. Resolution fail. All right. Item number 15. Consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund lump sum payment from defined benefit plan and refund of contributions from the defined contribution plan for Fred Couch. Kami, not here for a report. Do we have any?
This is just a normal retirement.
Just a normal? Okay.
Our retirement program, since somebody, since we allow lump sums out of our retirement program, it affects our pension quite significantly, so OMRF requires that the council approve the change.
Show my...
Have a motion? A second. Okay. Let's vote.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
I did.
I'm going to take my vote. I vote for it. It's all right. You didn't vote? Here you go.
Lisa, you have a vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item numbers...
I tend to vote for that, but I touch the wrong button.
Okay. Item number 16 is consider a resolution to surplus a 2001 Chevrolet pickup and a 1995 Chevrolet truck and donate to the Shawnee Civic and Cultural Development Authority.
Could we have discussion on this for a moment? Could you educate me a little bit about?
I'm going to let the city manager educate us on this. So, Kami, you can ask your question.
All right.
Very simply put, commissioners, the expo is always looking for scraps, and this is much better than what they drive now, and we've purchased a couple of newer vehicles in SMA and we're surplusing the older ones to the expo, so.
Do they have any value?
No, they're fully depreciated, so they're, you know, maybe $500 at tops, I would think.
Does that 95 even run?
Yeah, they run.
Depends on how fast you push it. Mine does. Motion to approve. A motion to approve? Do we have a second? A second by Commissioner Doxtra? Lisa, you need to vote, please. Motion carries. Mr. City Manager, any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business, but I might add, commissioners, particularly the new commissioners, we have a process here where if the commissioners would like to get an update on a project or something that's going on, give me a heads-up probably Wednesday before the Friday, and then I can line up the staff members and the expertise if you have questions about something, and we'll put it on the agenda as an administrative report in either the airport authority, the municipal authority, or the city commission's random meeting.
Okay.
And it would fit right at this time on our agenda, so we just need to know about it so we can be prepared for it.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Then I'll adjourn our city commission meeting. Thank you. We did that other one, didn't we?
You never did.
I did the municipal authority and the airport authority.
We didn't ever reconvene.
Airport authority is just for new business, but municipal authority has some actual business on it.
Well, we did that in the beginning. We just skipped it, I guess. Okay? I guess I cannot adjourn or tell them, okay? Municipal authority?
Adjourn the commission.
I'm going to adjourn the commission meeting. We're going to Shawnee Municipal Authority.
Airport authority.
Okay, well, we went to the airport authority.
Did I miss it?
Yes.
No, you're right. We just didn't finish it.
Didn't finish it.
We went to the airport authority and finished it.
We didn't finish either one.
We have new business on the airport.
New business and adjournment. On each one.
Well, I guess I don't have that in front of me. I got it here on this one, right here. I got it. I've got a different agenda than y'all.
Look like.
He does. We're trying to make it easy. It sounds like we do.
They just keep giving it to me. Okay, we've got to look at the airport authority. Let's look at item number two.
New business.
Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business this evening.
Okay, then I'm going to adjourn.
There you go.
Let's go to Shawnee Municipal Authority. Okay, item number two. Discussion concerning possible action on agreement with a rental pump for extension of the water line.
Commissioners, we were hopefully going to be prepared for this this evening. We are not. We're still waiting to hear back on our proposal from rental pump, and so we'll bring it to you just as soon as we get that taken care of.
Okay. Item number three, consider bids on the sanitary sewer rehab project.
Steve about to have a heart attack there. Don't land. I'm a talking board.
Steve's handing these out for the new commissioners. Our process is that the staff asks the commission to put these things out for bid based on our budget, so we put them out for bid, usually about 30 days. Steve, as soon as we convene the meeting, these will probably due today, Phyllis, I'm sure.
Yes.
They're due today at 4:30. So, they've come in, the staff's taken these and gone back and made copies and condensed it all down in this information for you, and at this point, we're just opening, and most likely, Steve's going to recommend that we get a couple of weeks to examine the bids and come back with a recommendation.
Well, Don will consent and then approve it so they can go ahead and open the bids.
Good evening, City Commission. Mr. Mayor, what I have here is our annual sewer rehab bid opening, and I'll read the bids into record. PM Construction and Rehab out of Pasadena, Texas, their bid amount was $887,291. We have TriStar Utilities, Inc. out of Independence, Kansas, their bid was $862,942. We have Craft Rental Construction Company out of Oklahoma City, they had a bid of $788,766.50. We have Jordan Contractors, Inc. out of Tecumseh, Oklahoma, they had a bid of $695,028. We have Matthew Trenching Company, Inc. out of Oklahoma City, for $1,169,897. I would like to defer the award to the next commission meeting to give us staff time to review the bids.
Could I ask for, could you educate me, Mr. Nelms, on do you use the same specifications for each bid that you send out? Could you educate me on your bid process?
Yeah, with the bid packet, we identify problem areas within the city. When we get footage that we think that we can rehab in one year based on the previous year's quantities for price per foot, we'll bid out, like this year, we bid out almost 11,000 feet in pipe bursting, with the option of renewing the contract for a second year if both parties agree on the quantity price. And whenever we let it out for bid, we have to, we send it out to the newspaper 21 days in advance, we send it to bid news, so it's bid out all over the state and nationally. That's why you have other states that can bid on this. So, each company has to contact us for a bid packet, and they all bid on the same items.
Okay. And do you have, like, evaluation criteria that you go by for each bidder?
We do.
Okay.
Maybe table that item for next meeting.
Motion by Vice Mayor here, and we have a second by Commissioner Hall.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add one point. I know most of the commissioners weren't here when the rates were increased about five years ago, but we now are doing $1 million in sewer distribution rehab and $1 million in water distribution rehab in our SMA budget where we weren't doing that. We are actually working on the deferred maintenance, so this is a part of that initiative that we work on every single year to try and get each of these sewer lines and water lines rehabbed.
Okay. Motion carries. Any new business?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority, and then I will take, adjourn the city commission meeting.
We're done. Good job.